You wouldn't mind silencing your phones, I would appreciate it. We'll kind of get started here. My name's James Boxerud. I'm a communication specialist for the postal service. We're here for a public input meeting. Thank you for coming. I appreciate your time. This is regarding the Postal Services Casper Processing and Distribution Center. The purpose of this meeting is to provide the initial findings of the Network Investment Modernization Review of the Casper facility. This was initiated in January and is currently underway. I want to talk about, let's talk about how we want to conduct the meeting. Today's meeting is being recorded, audio is recording. We'll offer a brief presentation of our initial findings and then we'll open up for public comment. Following the presentation, you'll be able to come up. I'll hand you the microphone. We're asking that you keep it to two minutes. There's a lot of people that want to talk. We have the room till five o'clock and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. Just to get a feel for who we have here in the room, if you're a member of the community, can you raise your hand? Okay, great. And if you're a postal employee, fellow employees. Okay, do we have any representatives from our congressional representatives or anything like that? Okay, over here. And who are you guys with?
I'm Mrs. Hagan.
Hagan? All three of you? Thank you for being here. Secretary of State's office, anybody here? Alright, we're going to go ahead and begin. We're excited about the work that's underway to modernize this nation's postal service network. I've been in the postal service since 1995 and it's in need of an overhaul. And I think most of our fellow employees would agree. And it's really to improve service delivery, not only here in Casper, but also throughout the nation. Now I'd like to hand it over to my colleague Felipe Flores. He's our Western Division Senior Director. Mr. Flores?
Alright, thank you. Alright, well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, James. Let me just preface a few things. As soon as I'm done explaining the review, I've got some Q and A that we've had outlined for you to share with you as we're going through them. I'll read the questions that have been asked in other community meetings that we've had. And then we'll go through them so that you can, you know, in the event that those were your questions. So anyways. Well, good afternoon. My name's Felipe Flores, Senior Director, Processing Operations. Thank you for coming out today. Before we go any further, I want to be very clear, okay? The facility, the Casper facility, will not close and there will be no career employee layoffs as part of this initiative. As you know, as part of this forty billion investment strategy to upgrade the improved and improve processing and transportation, delivery network, employee experiences across the country, the postal service has selected Casper PDC as one of many candidate facilities across the country for review of its current operations and potential future uses that may need to overall modernization and has been at the facility. The specific facility review will inform the best allocation of resources, strategies to improve customer service and to achieve significant cost savings through operational precision and efficiency.
Sir, pardon me. Would you just lower the mic?
Yeah, okay, we'll do it. Okay. Can everybody hear me in the back?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, got it. It is important to note that business mail entry, is that better?
It's sounder.
Yeah, a little better, okay. It's important to note the business mail entry, post office, station, branch, retail services that are not expected to change and delivery services will be unaffected because of this review. This modernization evaluation is a first step in the postal service review and investment process in this facility. Now, before we dive into the mail processing facility review, MPFR, here at the Casper PDC, I'd like to make a few comments on the postal service ten-year Delivery for America Plan for modernizing our nation's aging postal network. The USPS ten-year Delivery for America DFA Plan includes initiatives to improve organizational and operational processes, actively make the postal service an efficient, high-performing, world-class logistics and delivery provider. The diagram here shows our future postal network model from end to end. As established under the Delivery for America Plan, as depicted in this graphic, it is streamlined flow of mail and packages in a legit, logical and integrated manner. The model includes new types of facilities that we'll cover on the next slide. Our Delivery for America Plan and the evaluation of our existing operations and facilities is all about investing in a nation's aging and outmoded postal network. Since Delivery for America launched, we have committed nearly fifteen point three billion dollars of the plan's forty billion dollars, which is self-funded investment through budget, investment budget that will create a new network. We will make all these changes while maintaining high service standards we implemented in the plan's first two years. We will continue to meet our mission of delivery, six and sometimes seven days a week, in nearly a hundred and sixty-five million addresses, all while making the necessary middle mile improvements so we will deliver service excellence in the future. This ongoing review was initiated to evaluate what role the facility would take in the redesigned postal network. So let's take a look. The chart here shows four primary types of facilities that will comprise the modernized postal network under the Delivery for America Plan. Sixty national regional processing and distribution centers across will be supported by a streamlined constellation of local processing centers and delivery centers and delivery units for more effectively and efficiently efficiently move mail and packages across the nation. The Casper PDC Network Investment Modernization Review was initiated in January to evaluate what role the facility will take in the redesigned postal network and assess potentially moving some of the mail processing operations from the Casper PDC to the Billings PDC in Billings, Montana. Transferring some mail processing operations to the Billings PDC will mean that significant percentage of the mail collected locally will travel across the wider USPS transportation and processing network over significant distances to reach their final destinations in a more efficient manner. Mail and packages destined for outside the local area may receive better service and be more cost-effectively distributed by aggregating it with mail and packages from other areas going to the same places that would be likewise utilized the wider postal network and transport a significant distances from where the mail originated. Before we dive into the details, I want to make two points very clear. Based on the initial facility review, this facility is not closing. Let me repeat that again. This facility is not closing. It will be repositioned as a local processing center. Second, there will be no career employee layoffs as part of this initiative. There will be no career employee layoffs as part of this initiative. To start, let's talk about the local processing centers or LPCs. LPCs are essential component of our new network. LPCs like Casper will connect RPDCs and S and DCs to delivery operations with a primary mission, assorting letters and flats, mail to carry around, the delivery walk sequence, and servicing as a transfer center to aggregate products on his way to delivery. The Casper LPC is set to play a crucial role in the efficient movement of mail and packages within the regional processing and transportation. It will greatly benefit the postal service plan services aim at boosting revenue and strengthening its presence in the community. This facility will provide enhanced package processing and distribution capabilities in the local market as well as improvement amenities for the USPS employees. The enhancements made to this facility will lead to investments of up to two million dollars dedicated to modernization efforts and addressing deferred maintenance needs in this facility. We'll get into the details of these investments on the next slide, but first let's talk about the benefits of an LPC. Creating the LPC operation as a separate and distinct functional unit from the network RPDC functions will allow the postal service to standardize operations across the regions and provide specific management focus on local letter and flat operations for eight-two-four to eight-two-eight, allow constant leverages, existing investment in people, equipment in buildings, or allow transformation in the regional mail flow that captures significant operational logistical savings. How are we doing, man?
Good.
Good, okay. It is anticipated that LPCs, once modernized, will maintain the following destination operations once converted to the LPC. Destining packages, destining letters and flats, destining bundles, manual letters and flats, express, business mail entry, better known as the BMU. Finally, the business case supports transferring mail processes, processing and outgoing operations to the Billings PDC. Currently, majority of the mail and packages destined outside of Casper area to the rest of the world. Now, let's talk about how the postal service is going to invest two million dollars to modernize and improve the Casper LPC long overdue. First, I'd like to highlight some investments that will be made to this facility. On the working floor, lighting will be upgraded to LEDs. Flowing will be repairably finished. Impedants to open process flow will be removed. And dock areas will be generally rehabilitated, upgraded. Employee amenities will be refreshed. A renovation to restroom lockers and break areas. The LPC will also be fitted with data the auto-sorting equipment that will improve delivery services. New mail and processing equipment investments totaling four million dollars will be made to locate one Flex Over Sorter, FRS, into this facility. Overall, we plan to operate the following sorting equipment in this facility. Two delivery bar first orders with better known as DBCSs. One DBCS input-output system better known as an ILS. One Flex Over, which is new, FRS. Finally, the facility will feature evolving USPS self-service tools and technology to give our customers added services to new choices in how they ship and receive packages, including Smart Lockers, which are keyless self-service delivery solution that allows package shippers and package recipients to send and receive packages direct to post office, to post office smart locker location. The postal service plans to invest six million and eight million to the Casper LPC for modernization, deferred maintenance, new vehicle infrastructure, as we prepare the facility to serve as an important contributor to today's economy and for into the future. While we undergo this process, retail and other services currently available remain unchanged. A local postmark will continue to be available at retail locations in the community. We do not anticipate any changes to residential and business time of delivery. Business mail entry, post office, station, branch, retail service will remain unchanged. Delivery services are expected to remain unchanged in most cases. Establishing the Casper facility as an LPC center will provide, a local processing center or LPC will provide some cost savings to the United States Postal Service. We currently estimate savings between two point four million and three point two million annually once the initiative is completed. I want to be very clear, again, there will be no career employee layoffs as part of this initiative and we will not be closing this facility due to the transfer outgoing operations. Additionally, all bargaining employee reassignments will be made in accordance with the respective collective bargaining agreements that we do have. The postal service has made commitment to ensuring that there's a clear path for our pre-career employees to obtain full-time positions as evidenced by newly negotiated contract provisions of making automatic conversions to stabilize our workforce. In fact, this has culminated a hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight pre-career employees that have been converted to career over the past three years. A hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight pre-career employees have been converted to career employees in the last few years. Not too many companies can say that.
How many have to relocate?
Fifteen, fifteen people to relocate.
How many have to relocate?
We'll get to that.
We're worried about everything else, but I don't have.
We'll get to that.
You talk over people's heads.
Yeah, man, we'll get to that.
You don't understand what you're saying.
Understand, we'll get to that. Our pre-career workforce is a valuable employee category that provides us necessary operational flexibility leading to efficiencies. Like all employers, we have flexible employee categories. There's a higher turnover rate with these employees providing us the opportunity to both capture savings and right sizing our workforce when making long overdue operational changes and avoiding any career layoffs. So, what's the next steps? The findings have yet, the findings we have shared are preliminary findings. No decisions have been made yet. As we continue to move through the investment modernization process, we will carefully review and consider all public comments from the local community prior to a final decision. The public will have additional fifteen days after this meeting to submit admitted comments. Once we have reviewed the public comments, we will conclude the facility review and communicate the final decision. We will keep all postal employees and local community and additional stakeholders informed of our final decision as soon as it's reached. We will hold stand-up talks for our team members and communicate to the public as quoted. Once a final decision is reached, we will begin making the appropriate updates to the Casper facility in service of our Delivery for America Plan. Before we get into questions and comments, I want to address some of this information, the disinformation that has continued to spread about what we're doing here in Casper and throughout the country. By laying out the facts, we hope that we can clear up any misconceptions that you may have been told before an opportunity, ask questions or provide comments or feedback. To start, it's absolute fiction that we're closing this facility and laying off career employees. In fact, the fact is, we plan to modernize and invest in the Casper LPC, which is long overdue, to ensure that we can better serve our customers and our team members into the future. I also want to reiterate again with all our career employees, we will be able to keep, that they will be able to keep their jobs. The next mistruth I want to address is that our network modernization initiative will slow down the mail and moving some mail operations to another facility will slow down local mail. That is originating and destined to, that's originating destined to the Casper area. Local mail, meaning mail originated and destined to the same PDC, will not be delayed under this plan. While this type of mail would travel first to Billings and be processed, will be processed before returning to the LPC, it is important to know that local mail has a two-day standard, not an overnight standard. And this mail will not continue to be, and this mail would continue to be processed and delivered in two days. In fact, these changes will make our processes more efficient, dependable, because most of this mail does not stay in the local area, but is destined for other regions. Moreover, processing of local mail and packages at the Billings PDC allows for aggregation of mail fees that enables four trays after sortation and reduces the overall number of trays being sent to downstream facilities across the country. Higher density trays, containers and trucks, along with fewer origin hubs will decrease our transportation efficiency and lower our footprint. We know that there is also disinformation surrounding how the process will impact election now. Here are the facts. This network modernization initiative will result in improved service performance for years to come for our customers, including election officials and voters. We're still in the early implementations. We are still in the early implementation state of our network modernization efforts. These changes will have no bearing on the postal service commitment to fulfilling this role in the electoral process and delivering timely, consistent service within our standards. Finally, it is warranted the postal service will no longer use a local postmark in Casper. Customers will still be able to obtain a local postmark at retail post offices. With that, I will turn things over to James, but before we do that, let's go and put a look at a few of those, and then I'll turn it over to James. And I apologize because I normally have a screen in the front and I don't, so I'm going to have to take a look at my back. Alright, ready? Okay, let me ask, can you guys see that from the back? Make it a little larger.
A little.
A little larger, okay. There you go. Is that good?
A little better.
A little bit more. A little bit more. So again, these are just questions that have, that have, you know, that the community or, you know, our employees have had. And kind of put them together, because these are normally the questions that are being asked in our community meetings that we're having today. So I'm not going to read all of them. I've got to highlight it. I'm going to do just a highlight of the ones that that I'm sure many of you have. So let's start with the first one here. Why is the United States Postal Service conducting a review of this facility? And you guys, you guys help me out, but I got the mic to highlight. Okay. The Casper Processing and Distribution Center has been selected as a candidate for evaluation of the current operations and potential future uses that may need to overall modernization and has been issued at this facility. And I know that some of this might be some redundant, but I'm going to say it again. Is this facility closed? Okay. The review of this result and this facility's closure, the fact is quite opposite. We plan to modernize and invest in the Casper facility, which is long overdue so it can serve our customers and employees for the long future. Not closing the facility. Okay. Will there be employee layoffs? As a current postal team member, there will not be layoffs. Okay. There will be no career employee layoffs as a result of this facility's review and any resulting changes that may happen.
How many people will have to relocate?
We're going to, we're going to provide you the, we're going to get your questions.
We're all around it, but we don't come down to the facts. What about it?
What does a facility remove for the local employees? Once it is determined that some mail processing outgoing operations should move to the Billings PDC, Montana, we will then upgrade the Casper LPC by redesigning its working floor.
Can't be upgraded without redesigning, without reclassifying it? Can you still give it money without modern, without reclassifying it?
We can.
Yeah. You can't just choose not to. You're using modernization as an excuse to reclassifying it. Can't you just modernize it as it is?
We deserve that.
If you still want to serve it in the long future, keep it as it is and modernize it now without reclassifying it.
And it's not realistic to think that sending mail all the way to Billings and back again is either ecologically feasible. Look at all the extra diesel you're burning. Where you can keep it right here local and just ship it right out to all our rural areas.
And don't say this is a voyage, this is already happened in Cheyenne. It's already happened once.
Two days, two days delivery is ridiculous. You can't do it that way. You cannot do it that way.
Sorry. We're going to go ahead and hand it over to James.
And it's winter time. What happens in the winter time when you've got to do all the way to Billings?
Alright, let's hold on a second. Alright, this is, this is.
Does UPS, does FedEx, does Walmart? Are you coming to talk to us again? No, I'm talking to US mail.
That's right.
This is the US mail, not FedEx.
Alright, we're going to, we're going to have, we've organized meeting here. We're not going to have a crazy.
Answer the question.
I'll answer it as best as I can, okay? I want to talk about, no, I don't.
Don't talk over us. Talk about it.
Alright, but let's have a conversation. Let's not just have a rap.
You're wrong, you're too.
And I'll tell you what, I'm giving you all the information that I have. I have no hidden information or anything like that. So hold on a second. Now, my turn right now, alright? This is an opportunity for the community and members and our employees to come up and give a public comment, okay? This is being recorded. We will transcribe it and go ahead and submit all this to the powers that be, the ones that actually make the determination. So we're going to make this organized and respectful. Now, I just put up on the screen a QR code and I'd ask if you have your phone, go ahead and take a picture of it or go to it. This gives you the opportunity to go ahead and put your public comments in, in your own words. Because if somebody is transcribing this and they make a mistake because they have hours and hours of transcription to do, I want to make sure that your comments get in there the way you want those written in there. So I recommend going to those QR codes. They'll talk about the survey. They'll talk about what we're doing, okay? Um, let's see. With that, let's go ahead and open up for comment. And what I'll have you do, I'll have you come up front, state your name, let me know if you're an employee or a member of the community, and we'll go from there. Come on.
Alright, my name is Andrew Dekebach. I am an employee and a resident of Casper, Wyoming. First thing I want to address, Felipe, do you know Jason Yashimura?
I do know Jason.
He was sent down on January fourteenth to talk to us, the postal employees, about what was happening. He said something totally different than you. He told us the decision had already been made. It is happening. It's going to Billings and this is only a formality. He said that point blank, we made a bunch of statements stating what he said because we were very shocked to feel that this meant nothing, that this is just your information to give us. Also, he told us that, you know, your focus isn't on customer satisfaction. It's on high volume mail processing. So that, once again, it's like, no, we are a service, not a business that you guys are trying to run us. And so it's hard to think that. And another thing that he reiterated over and over to the employees is that, no, we're just making sure people get what they pay for. So that one day turnaround from Cody to Sheridan or whatever that you get through the mail processing, you will have to pay for that because they can juggle the mail all the way to Billings and back because you're still getting what they promised. Now, you're going to get a lower service, which Congress has told you guys over and over and over again that you cannot screw the rural areas. You cannot go out to the small towns for your profits and do it because all you're doing is doing it on mail to make a bigger profit. I get you're looking big picture and you see Wyoming, six hundred thousand people getting the shit end of the stick. And that's what's happening because it's all going to be going up there so you can make more money off of us who are already on the race and are getting what we need. So that's where we stand and that's crazy that you get up here and say it's not made and then you have one of your employees come and tell us the exact opposite. So either your line, he's line, it's all for roads. It's your communications and you can't even get it straight. So one week, you lied. One of you guys did to us.
Oh, let this gentleman go and then you Ricky.
My name is Shaw Kura. I'm a member of this community. I'm a third-generation postal worker. All of us are with Wyoming. Another point that we were given from Jason was that a lot of this plan determined on attrition, was determined by attrition. And they spoke about attrition and we heard here actual speaking points on a high turnover rate being something good for our community. We don't want Wyomingites to have jobs. We don't want the people of this town to contribute to their own community and that's, I'm not even going to use the language I want to use. It's immoral. It's unethical. This is our post office. We do deserve to be upgraded to not using old obsolete machines. We do deserve to be treated like a, like a, 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 an actual meaningful piece in this entire organization. We do not want the mail being taken out of Wyoming. We do not want any of this happening. It's going to, they're going to excess people out of our community. We're going to, they're going to not hire as many people as we can, as they can. And they're going to depend on them to quit. Furthermore, they're sending them out of town for simple things like orientation. They're sending them to Billings already. They're sending them to billings already. Our current P S E said is going to billings for orientation, they have to pay for it. You have to pay to get a job in the U S P S.
I don't think that's correct with the, uh, training. We pay for training.
I don't believe that.
Um, I had, I think Ricky wanted to.
Sixty percent. Good afternoon, my name is Ricky Roberts and I am the branch president for the Mailhanders in Cheyenne. I came here today to address my concerns with the lack of transparency from the U S Postal Service and the lower standards of service the post office is providing. First, I would like to address the notion that no employees would be laid off. This is deceptive language meant to deceive the public. The truth is that many of employees from Cheyenne, Casper and Wills nationwide are going to be faced with the option of giving up their family, friends and homes in order to relocate and maintain their job within the U S P S. A four hour drive from Casper to billings is not one that can be commuted. The post office terms this as accessing. It is for all intents and purposes a layoff for many employees. The net craft is also warranted precariously. In Provo, U S P S extends excess fifty-one employees. Officially, minus forty-three and eight were left over. The fifty-one minus forty-three is eight, which was a net craft loss. Now, if you'll notice, on your sheet, it says six. They've already changed the number once to fifteen. Secondly, I would like to bring attention to the timing of this meeting. At the time, many people in Casper are working. Many postal employees. And you can look at that with the fact that the U S P S will not be answering questions and will not be providing any real answers to the public. This is disrespectful to meet the employees and all the members of the public who graciously come here to get some explanations. I would also like to note that the members of this meeting are being recorded as it was just for Cheyenne. Uh, they are counting postal official employees, public news agencies, and they're trying to figure out how well they're quashing this information. Um, I would also like to give major kudos and thanks to Senator Lummis, Senator Barasso, U S Representative Harriet Agnewman, Wyoming Secretary of State Chuck Gray, among numerous others. Make no mistake of their concern and support key Wyoming mail in Wyoming and to protect Wyoming jobs in the great Wyoming state. Agnewman will move from DeJoy to D C for requesting information, which we'll find is happening nationwide with a total lack of transparency and disrespect to the American people. This is a direct quote from DeJoy. "We aim to minimize service disruption where possible while also meeting service requirements. Complications may occur, so we plan to proactively communicate often and early with our employees, customers and relevant stakeholders." Nothing has been communicated to us, that the meeting in Cheyenne was on December twelfth and we have not garnered a single piece of information since then. I have formally requested access to the studies uh, that show that we will save three million dollars in transportation costs alone, but I have been denied access for reasons that the studies are not complete. So let me ask, do these studies even exist? Or is the U S P S flying by the seat of their pants and making drastic changes without due diligence? If this is such a good move for the residents of Wyoming, why is this information not widely distributed into the public? The secrecy is there for a reason. DeJoy later goes on, let me get it off again, to massively disrespect U S P S employees, saying our opinions have no competency determining on how the mail is ran. The vast majority of us have dedicated our lives to the post office while he is the first postmaster general in two decades with no postal experience. Not only does he have no postal experience, as he was a supply chain chief executive for X B O, which is a trucking company, you should notice the coincidence for suddenly removing mail from the air and moving it to the ground, thus lowering the standards, which he has already lowered, by the way, from three day to four to five day. The Postal Service emphasized the critical importance of the initiative and that it must be implemented at a rapid pace. This is exactly what is happening, is they do not want the public to catch on. When talking about ending the evening blue box collections, the post office was choosing not to inform customers as it considers it commercially sensitive information. In conclusion, your gut feeling is correct. They are absolutely discriminating against rural communities as they are more expensive to deliver to. This is unacceptable and against everything I stand for. It goes against, uh, postal regulations to discriminate against a group of people, yet it is happening right in front of us. I took an oath to protect the mail and I will not be complacent in this. Wyoming is very much a state and we deserve all the rights of a statehood. We are rural and we stand together.
I'm only looking at this side of the room right now. And we gotta, we have the little microphone issue, so we're getting some batteries. So anybody that can speak loudly, go ahead and invite up. I would like to remind you, and, and I don't mind letting our union representatives, especially, um, those that hold office, speak a little longer, but we do wanna try to keep it to two minutes or else we will run out of time. Your name, sir?
Mark Curra. Retired, U S P S employee. For one thing, Wyoming's gonna be the only state in union without a processing and distribution center. That's not right. Um, how many veterans do we have in the room? How many veterans are on medication? Now, that's big word. I'm on medication, I'm a veteran, I get my medications from the V A. I don't have any life-saving medications, but some veterans do, quite a few. And if they can't get their medicine in a timely manner, that's tantamount to attempted murder. Anyway, um, I'm thinking DeJoy has a plan to privatize, or at least semi-privatize. All of us should be worried about that. Unless you're a buddy of DeJoy's. He's gonna hire his buddies, they're gonna hire their buddies, right on down the line. Through, through management and they will keep the workers as they know how to do the work.
Thank you for your service and thank you for your time. Army?
Yeah. I don't know, I need it.
No worries.
My name's Brad Shellkey, I'm a citizen. Very proud to be here. I have a question, has anybody assessed how many packages coming into Wyoming to all of our homes is affected going through the billings distribution center? Do you have not assessed?
I'll take it, there will not, the service will not.
No, no, that's not my question. Have you assessed the volume of packages? Go, go through billings and return here? The incoming volume of packages, as the gentleman mentioned, medication, all kinds of things we have to get at our home. How many packages are affected monthly or yearly, since you're making this decision?
So.
Volume of pack, just simple question, vol, volume of packages.
We do have the volume.
What is the volume?
The volume for outgoing, going to billings.
No, 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 outgoing, we don't, we're not as concerned about. We know that incoming to our homes, especially medical, how many are affected in the Wyoming area?
Yeah, that's just a basic question. Purpose of this assessment was on.
It's, you, you can't answer it, but you have not assessed, you have not assessed what these people and those not here will have to delay a package or whatever time, how many packages, and it's okay, because I knew you didn't.
We do have the volume.
You, you don't have the volume, come in here, you give me a number.
We do have the volume, we know exactly.
How much, what's the volume?
Circle.
Okay, never mind, never mind. We, we should not approve something like this. Because our processing center, if they're gonna put all these millions into it, why didn't we do it, as one gentleman mentioned, before now when we're gonna lose our processing center? And then we're gonna be promised that everything, millions are gonna go into Casper. I'm not buying the carrot. I just, I just don't think we're. Billings has one hundred and twenty thousand population in just a city. Another forty surrounding areas. Do I want our important packages mixed in with their two times, three times our population? I'm not even counting all rural areas here. No, I don't. And I know when the storms hit, they're not gonna be able to come down here. There's just too many problems. Cheyenne should never allow anything to go into Denver, Colorado when they process. They should never have, lose that site. Who wants to send their stuff to Denver, Colorado? Almost one million people in Denver. And all the Cheyennes' mail's gonna be processed in Denver. There, there is no logic. There is no understanding and there aren't promises. I don't wanna hear them. And assessments aren't really valid here. I'm gonna tell you the truth. They do not know the volume that will be affected. I've asked and they don't know and they won't tell. The only other things I wanna offer before, I, I, the, the, the situation of it being acceptable, all of us in Wyoming are gonna say, no, this is unacceptable. And Washington, D C mandating people coming down here and, and, and giving us a song and dance, that's not acceptable for us to be the only state without large package processing and distribution. Cannot happen. And let's, let's send stuff in and let's make sure that we, make sure we keep our distribution center. Thank you.
Sir, I apologize, I didn't catch your name again.
Brad.
Brad.
Shell.
Yeah, so Brad, just, uh, just some facts about the current flow of destining package into the eight two four eight two area. You are correct. You are correct. That the destining product or packages come through Denver. It gets processed in, in, in Denver at the N D C, at the D E C as we speak. And we don't, we do know the volume. Very little bit is processed in Casper right now for anything that's destined in the three eight two four, eight two eight area. Now, right now, from Casper to Denver, the mileage, you know, to the facility there is two hundred.
Casper to where?
Casper to Denver.
We're talking about billings?
I understand, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get there. So Casper to Denver, Denver to Casper, two hundred and twenty-seven miles. Casper to billings is two hundred and twenty-eight. So it's about, it's the same. It's literally the same mileage. So, um, part of this, uh, L P C is, like I discussed in my opening comments, is now giving the opportunity for Casper, the destining site, to keep their packages. Other words, comes in through the, you know, surface inbound, air network inbound out of billings, of course, but through billings, bring it directly to Casper for the Casper, for that, for this facility to do their own packages. It's actually a good thing, to the point you just made about that, okay, so.
We wouldn't need packages going into billings.
I just wanted to make sure that I answered your.
You didn't answer, you really didn't answer. We don't need volume of packages going to billings before they come here. When it's being distributed here to families in our state. We don't feel we need, we don't want it, it's unacceptable.
Understood, okay.
My name is Mina Adamson. My son has been a mail carrier in Casper for fifteen plus years. He goes out in, he goes out in all kinds of elements to deliver mail. He takes his job very, very seriously. He checks in on the elderly. My daughter-in-law's father worked for the postal service and mail sorter for thirty-plus years here in Casper. And he's built up putting in more modern, high-tech sorting machines. The sorting machine in Casper was taken out per DeJoy. DeJoy is a money man. DeJoy has never delivered the mail. He's never worked in a post office. He's never worked in a processing center. DeJoy knows nothing about Wyoming rural area. Nothing. And he doesn't care to educate himself. When the roads are closed, what is your plan?
Thank you. And Mina, not just, uh, you, you said something, you stated that DeJoy took a machine out of?
Yes.
Which machine, I, I don't.
It was a sorting machine.
Sorting.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought you, I thought you mentioned a package, a package though, because we never had a package building. And that's what we want to. Yeah, no, no, that's okay, I mean, that's a, it's a D D C S, okay, got it.
And an A F C S.
Right.
We lost two D D C S, this one A F C S, the flyer doesn't work, we never got another one.
Okay. Yeah, I misunderstood, I, I thought you had mentioned a package sort of machine, man.
No, he's not my hand.
Yes, yes. Can you talk to the employees instead of the finance paper in front of your staff? Talk to your employees. I'm not set, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This administration seems to target in on Wyoming and rural and their jobs. First, it's the oil and gas industry, then it's the coal industry, now it's our post office. They do not care about rural Wyoming or the hardworking Americans in this room. And this meeting should have been after five o'clock. My husband gets C P A P supplies through the United States Post Office. He cannot, he has very bad asthma. He cannot have any delays in his deliveries with his C P A P supplies. If the road is closed, it's impossible. I'd like to ask where you all live.
Lions, Colorado.
Colorado?
Denver, Colorado.
Kirk, New Mexico.
Hey?
China.
Thank you. My kids all live in Colorado. Colorado has a lot milder winter than we do and they don't have the wind. When I go and visit my kids and grandkids, I absolutely enjoy it. Um, however, when Denver calls, when they're, last year, we had a historic, record-breaking snowstorm. They gave us thirty-five inches of snow and wind. We literally were shut down. So getting anything out of Casper up to billings and back is not going to be either cost or time efficient. You need to sit down with the employees instead of finances. These fine people in here, my son, retired, retired, uh, postal workers and talk to the hardworking Americans.
My name is Jamie Ifland. I'm a postal customer. I live in Casper, Wyoming. I lived in this same house for thirty-four years. I'm also a retired business owner. I wanna start by saying how very much I appreciate the union presence here. You guys. You guys are the frontline and I have to tell you, you're doing a great job. I get my mail pretty much on the same time, pretty much every day. Which is what I count on you for. I wanna talk a little bit about business recruitment. This level of technical detail, which you all can appreciate, but I have no connection to, I, I couldn't. But let's just imagine the situation in which our, the state of Wyoming's business recruitment people go out to recruit business to come into Wyoming. If it's a business that requires shipping or mail and tell me what business doesn't. Somewhere along the line, that potential business should inquire about the quality of our mail service here. And the issues that you all have raised are important ones. From that perspective, we are a rural state, we all know that. Do we aspire to not be a rural state? I don't think we do, but I do think that we do aspire to grow. So putting us one down to the other states seems like a bad idea.
It's discrimination.
If you would allow me to continue, please. So I have these questions. I'd like to know, have you done this somewhere else and how'd it work out?
So I've been a part of a couple of these studies, one, uh, last month or in December down in Cheyenne. So, uh, we did the same thing, we did a public meeting. We've met with the, um, congressional representatives afterwards. Had individuals from the secretary of state talking about the findings. We've had individuals from the Secretary of State talking about the findings. To my knowledge, they haven't made a determination on Cheyenne as of yet.
There's about 80 of these in study right now across the nation.
Can you tell us what happened in Houston?
Thank you.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's not part of this process. That's a different.
It's all, it's all, no.
If I may continue, I know they're going to shorten my time. I'd also like to know how our service will compare considering weather, distance, all the factors. How will we compare to New York City?
I don't know.
Why not? So they didn't backfill your information?
I don't, I don't.
Who would know that? We don't know, but we should know. Thank you.
And I don't mean to be ignoring that side of the room. We'll move over there here after we get done more comments. I do ask if you can keep them to two minutes. If they go a little bit over, I understand, but we do want to give everybody an opportunity to talk.
So my name is Jill Reed. I'm a Wyoming native, native to Casper. In the oil and gas industry, uranium mining for over 30 years. Had my own private business, Jill Gaines, here in town. Relyed upon the mail service forever. To get leases done, to get my coffee, to do whatever I needed to do, I relied on the US mail. I'm still a lady that sends cards to family members and friends. And I want this to get my comments on time. My family, someone around town, and I count on the US Postal Service. So the things that I've observed as just a community member is, one, I have seen core service from the postal service in the last couple of years than ever before. And it's not my local carriers. I see my local carrier about the same time every day. He's a great carrier and does a super job. Now, I can only speak for my own, but I know that I'm very pleased with the mail service. However, not long ago, I sent a package to the US Postal Service in Denver with tracking. And I never did get proof that they got it. I had to call that US Postal Service employee and make sure they got it to send something on down to St. Louis, Missouri. So I was not happy with that. And I've seen some very strange tracking lately. If you open up tracking when you've sent something, it's come here and it's going back somewhere. It's very strange and I have to bring that to your attention because it's proof. Okay, so I'm going to bring that up. And I'm going to say that I've been known to put 80,000 miles on a car in the state of Wyoming and maybe I'm into Montana in a year's time as a landman in the oil and gas industry, as I work county courthouses and work for people to get leases. And the only time that I've ever been stuck sleeping in a vehicle was on the road to Billings, Montana. And I could get out of there. And there were hundreds of cars on the highway. So I would recommend that you could go back in time if they kept records back then. This would have been the mid-'80s and I was stuck there with hundreds of cars. Only place. So I just want to bring that to your attention. It is not a safe route. It is not a good plan and I respectfully ask that you reconsider. Thank you.
Well, fully, I have, I worked at Casper Mail Processing Center myself. My name is Eric Berlin. My question is to you, since we're losing, we're going to lose our outgoing mail, are we going to get a flat sorter? Because all of our mail right now, our flats are done and processed in Cheyenne. And on top of that, I work as an expediter through three, on Saturdays, Sundays. I was wondering, since we're, we're going to have all of our mail go to Billings, Montana, are we going to have to have, we're going to have to have our trucks come in at a different time, correct? Because our last AO truck comes in at approximately like 8:50. Yeah. Yeah. Eight three. That's all I have for it.
So just to, just to answer your questions, that's also being reviewed about you guys getting your flats back. Like I just, like I told Brad earlier, what we want to be able to do is have these places, you know, like the Denburs of the world, right? Stop processing Casper 8248, 824828 mail and get it in Casper. Put package capability so you're processing your own mail. Because, look, I know that, you know, Brad, I'm not sure if you know this, but 90%, maybe more than 92% of mail that's destined to Casper service area, 824828, I would note to you, 90% of it is being processed to the five-digit level in Denver. Why not have it come through and get it processed in Casper 100% of it? It's the right thing to do. Right? So I'm not sure. What's your second question?
Are we going to have to change our AO truck times the way they're scheduled?
Um, yeah. But that will also have to be re-reviewed, right? Because right now, if you have a truck that's going to, you have, actually, right now as we speak, and T, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a four, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are four Billings outbound trucks here in Casper that go to Billings. Either come in here.
Only two of them stop at the Casper office.
Okay.
The other two stop out at the truck stop. They don't come to our office.
Yeah, but there are, there's two trucks.
They're usually too full to put anything on a mail.
Right. Because of, and most of the, most of the mail that's coming in, right, that you see, they're not full containers.
We can get our own mail out.
Correct, which is not full containers. But the transportation will be reviewed as well. But yeah, there will, there will more than likely be some review of this, maybe some changes to get that mail over to Billings. Good question, probably. You're two minutes early. Actually, I'm going to let Senator Lummis's office talk.
So first and foremost, thank you to those who've been here. Thank you to all of the postal workers here in Wyoming and across the country for that matter. I'm just, I'm here, I'm here to encourage everyone who's interested to please comment. Comment with substance. It's really important. I would share with you that of our experience in hearing from constituents across the state, Afton, Wyoming, whose mail processing is done in Salt Lake City, it takes a week. From Afton to Afton mail, it takes a week. So that's my experience. And someone here asked how, what some of those effects would be. Senator Lummis sent a letter to Postmaster General DeJoy and expressed her concern about the China Processing and Distribution Center and in fact adamantly opposed it, concerned with certain aspects of the Postal Service's 10-year strategic plan, especially when it comes to the China facility and at the expense of rural communities in Wyoming. She said unfortunately, it has not been transparent. She has more questions than answers about how the processing would take place in Colorado. And that all said, as well as much more in her correspondence, leaving Cheyenne without a P and D C is unacceptable. I would, I got the blessing of some of my counterparts here in Casper, Senator Ransell's office and Representative Pagamans, who also signed a letter with Senator Lummis. So a delegation letter, if you will, expressing their strong opposition to the Postal Service Delivery for America VFA Plan. And we, expressing that we've heard from several constituents throughout the state. Since the initial findings, again, though, I want to say, please, please comment as well, in addition to what we've heard in our offices. Since the initial findings of the review for these changes, the amount of information provided by the Postal Service, including the duration of the review, whether the initial findings have shifted and an estimated timeline for decision, among other critical details have been withheld. The impact these decisions will have on the integrity of Wyoming's mail operations in addition to livelihoods of those who carry the mail, it will be significant. Reliable, timely, and efficient mail service in Wyoming is just as important as anywhere else in the nation. We need to comment on some of these changes that the Postal Service has sought out. But some of those changes take an effect across the nation. It must be highlighted and understood. The delegation stated that Wyoming is likely one of the few states that will be losing the bulk, if not all, of its mail processing capabilities. And stripping Wyoming of those processing services places our state's operations on an unequal footing compared to other states. Wyoming's mail deserves to be processed in Wyoming.
Thank you, Jamie.
Can I ask how long it took to get from Afton to Afton before they sent Rock Springs mail to Salt Lake?
You know, I would have to look at each of those individual bases, but I do not count the.
Overnight, no more than two days.
Yeah, we're going to get to the next question, but Mark, I didn't catch you last minute and I apologize for that.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
I bet you can't spell that.
But I just wanted to make sure that I did, I made a comment earlier about that privatized. And, you know, I've been in the Postal Service for 30 years. I've got, I've responded, I have almost had over six, six of our states in this beautiful country. And I will tell you, you use the word private today. I will tell you that we have now taken, just in case you don't know, we have what's called THS, Transport Handling, in Denver, in Phoenix, in Salt Lake City, because I'm responsible for Arizona, Carolina, Utah. And now we have taken that away from private and we have postal team members, family members now doing that work. And we have hired converted numerous team members now as a result of taking out a private industry and now us doing it, Postal Blue doing it.
I'm sure, I'm sure you don't want the privatization.
No, 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 just that we.
I think that Postmaster DeJoy kind of leans that way. That's just my opinion.
Right, Mark, and it's just, they have, in the last year, in the last, not, not fiscal year, calendar year 2020, sorry, 2023, we took on now, we're doing it, we took the Salt Lake City Transfer Center that was privatized, that was, that was private, we are now doing it, postal employers are doing it, we've taken it over. In Phoenix, we have now taken, we have taken it over and we are doing it ourselves. The same thing is in Denver, as of what thing, a month ago?
Yeah, the third, second week of the pandemic.
We're now doing it, postal employers are doing it.
That was a huge impression.
We have taken it off. We feel better than anybody else, right? I didn't even know that. We feel better than anybody else.
Isn't THS supposed to air, correct?
Yes, but that goes out of.
They think that you're trying to shrink down as much as possible.
We should, yeah, we should, that belongs to us all now. We, that belongs to us. All right, I'm just going to move over to the side of the room because I'm going to, Tony? Come on forward.
I hope you can speak out.
No, I'm just going, I'm just here to listen.
Tonyo.
My name is Tony. My name is Tonyo Davis. Live in Casper, Wyoming, in general, but Casper for 32 years, subjecting physical years into it. And I came to Wyoming right out of the service because my hometown, Lions, Colorado, which I went to high school, sucked. So I've been in Wyoming for 47 years. I also, sorry, I stepped in front of that, but that is completely useless to me because I'm old, okay? That, I am a techno car, okay? I don't know how to do that kind of stuff. Okay. All right. Now, you guys, I'm sorry that you had this. I was supposed, I was supposed to be here at one. The first post a month ago was be here at one. I came here at one. Oh, it's at two. Okay, nothing. Okay, started at three, which are very convenient for you folks. Because if you notice, half your dedicated postal employees in their green shirts have left to go to work. Okay? And the public can't get here because they don't get off till five. And they just can't get, well, I'm going to the postal office meeting, you know, you tell your boss that, you know, he'll be, he'll be out. But at any rate, I think it's, do you guys actually know how many carriers, employees, rural, you guys actually know how many are here in Wyoming? No, you don't. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We have almost 2,000 employees.
Oh, that was a good guess, but we don't know.
That is true.
Okay. Well, you guys say it's true, of course.
We know how many, how many team members we've got. You would know that, you know.
Yeah. Whatever you guys say. At any rate, you know, a bunch of bold old stuff here. Excuse me, but we need everything in Wyoming left in Wyoming. You guys have no concept, no idea what the hell's going on up there. Now, was it my understanding, I don't know, wrote in Billings? And then back to Denver? And then to Casper?
The hood.
Ah. We've already heard of this.
Could.
Yeah. Okay, and half the employees that are, were in Rock Springs are gone.
We have employees in Casper from Rock Springs.
They came up here, huh?
Yes.
A horse move. Yeah, you guys, you guys, you guys really did slap yourselves on the back when this is all over and say, what a good job you did, pretty bad, I don't fucking count that as well.
I'm Phil Schwindinger from Hawaii. I too am a disabled vet. I've kept my meds from Sheridan, Tucson, and St. Louis. And I really depend on the USPS to get my meds in a timely manner. Thank you.
I'm going to hit the side room for a little bit. Anybody else that saw it, another hand up. What it's her.
My name is Terry Glender. I used to be accounting commissioner. And I was wondering, is there any other, I'm not accounting commissioner now, yet. But anyway, is there any other local elective official in this room? Were they notified? I'm surprised that there's no other city councilman or county commissioner here.
So today, I actually have answered that. Today they had a really important meeting, holy prayer, that was. And so coincidentally, this also landed on.
Well, needless to say, we want to keep the jobs here in Wyoming, in this county. I've normally heard it before. And I was wondering, sir, are you going to, is this the only meeting you're going to have or are you going to, you're going to have other meetings?
I know in the future, after they make the determination on what they're going to do, that we're going to go ahead and let everybody know. I don't know how that is, whether in a public meeting or a press release or how we're going to share that.
And I was wondering, how much are you spending in Cheyenne compared to Casper? In their center over in Cheyenne?
How much we're spending or saving?
Yeah. Now, you mentioned you're going to spend $3 to $4 million here in the Casper post office. But how much in the processing segment in Cheyenne?
We'll find out.
Okay, okay. I'm just kind of curious about that. And you also said, no current employees, employees are going to be laid off. But what about when they retire? Are you going to be hiring less employees, or what, here in Casper, in this county?
So we'll hire for all the positions that we need. I mean, right now, there's kind of a national...
Just less than there is now.
But there's a good chance you'll be hiring less employees in the future.
That's a, that's a good possibility.
So, well, we don't like that. Well, anyway, I just, I want you folks to know, I appreciate you showing up. And I'm surprised, I'm always surprised with northern county or city official here. You know, there's an economic development group here in town, it's called Casper First. And I'm sure if you get the whole adjacent down there, he'll be fighting for you. I'm sure all the local elected officials will fight for you. I just don't know where they are. And they don't know anything about this meeting.
No governor, of course.
Yeah.
No governor, of course.
But I just want to thank you all for showing up, and let's keep the jobs here in this county. There's not many more.
We'll choose one more from over here, and then we'll go back to the other side of the room. Hold on, Cindy, wait, or actually, I'll choose two. Sorry, sorry about that.
I just have one question. My name is Jerry Blackwood. How did you publicize this meeting? How did you tell everybody to show up? And when you have any mention, gentlemen, I mentioned, once this is all finished, you're going to disseminate this information out. How did you let everybody know about this meeting?
So in my role, I'm a communication specialist, so I send information out to the media. So we have other departments, like our Consumer Affairs Office, that talk to the congressional representatives, that let them, I'm not sure who, what other areas we have to go ahead and talk about, hey, we have a public meeting. That's all.
Well, I would suggest if you look at a couple of options. I've heard that you could find out on Facebook. I'm with that demo, I'm a real creative. So I suppose we're here. There's a service down here that will send out letters to everybody in Casper who was private. But I think if anybody's got all the mail boxes in Casper, you have it. And wouldn't we drop a message if everybody's in a lot?
You know, I appreciate those comments, because those are good. I mean, one of the things we were talking about earlier, can't remember who mentioned it, about, you know, well, why are we having it at 3 o'clock? And I know that came up, Ricky and Bob, when we were in Cheyenne. We did pass along that information, and I know they're going to start doing them like 6 to 8 o'clock, something along those lines. I believe the original idea was, since most of the employees that are going to be affected work the later afternoon overnight shift, that gives them an opportunity to be here. Because, like somebody mentioned, hey, a lot of our APWU members had to go off and go to work. So that was part of the reason. But they are going to move those to later in the day. All right, Miss, you agree, Andrew, is for a team though? So the question was, are we going to do electric vehicles in Wyoming? And that's tough for an oil and gas state, right? I don't think any of us here had that answer. You know, I don't even know what the infrastructure's here to support next generation vehicles.
Excepted 65 million people, not just Wyoming. The charging stations froze, and their battery has 40% less charging power in cold. We're not the only cold state. We are known for our harsh winters, but it was in Chicago, New York, Wisconsin, wherever, they were all affected.
They're getting the lessons, man.
What was your, what was your name again?
That's what he overstated.
Okay, hey, so...
Not exactly accurate.
Yeah, all right, so I'm going to move over to this side of the room. Go ahead.
My name is Debbie Cox, I'm the president of the American Postal Workers Union, number 580 in Casper. And I'm also the president for the state of Wyoming. The Postal Reform Act of 1970 requires the postal service to provide timely and efficient mail service to the American public. The postal... Okay, I'm off, I'm getting old. The Postal Accountability Act requires the postal service to have a public meeting for their input when something to this effect takes place. It also states in there that they are supposed to have a public meeting that is convenient and accessible for the general population to be able to put their input in. 3 o'clock in the afternoon is not accessible and not convenient for the majority of our customers. This meeting needs to be held in the evening, anywhere from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock until 9 o'clock, so the majority of the people can provide their input. And I think anybody that agrees with that statement, let's show them that we mean this, and stand up, and ask that the meeting be rescheduled for our stockholders to be here.
Cynthia, she's from the Navigators.
So I'm one of those people who listen as best as I can, tried to find this meeting, showed up at 2 o'clock, and sat for an hour, and watched everybody else come in. And that's okay, because I got, you know, a space where I could be more comfortable. And I really had not planned on talking today, and by the way, my name is Cynthia Nellie, in case I forgot to tell you, because I told him earlier, he has my car. I've lived in the same house in Casper, Wyoming, for 70 years. That's probably before the postal office was born, as far as I know. But all I know is that I remember, you know, from the age of 8 or 9 or 10, getting packages from California, family in Kentucky, and all of those things. What has given me great concern is the current Postmaster General. I think we're going to modernize, I think we need to look at him, because he's been there long enough, and it's time to get a new body in there. Eight years ago, all of a sudden, I started not having, you know, the regular carrier. And then six years ago, it was, well, they have this hiring freeze, or whatever, all of these years, and so it's like... And then somebody has to bid to be my postal office carrier, or somebody has to contract that. It was all of these excuses that I've never had in 70 years. An excuse of sending a package going to San Diego, somehow through Arizona, twice through Arizona, before it got back to San Diego, just, just wrong. The good thing about the postal office is when I go down there, those people recognize me, and they say, you know, how are you doing? How's the leg? How are the grand nieces and nephews, whatever it is, there, there. And they have a minute or two to say those things. My route carrier has a minute or two to check up on sayings. My fear is that this modernization is just the beginning. And it starts, we start losing those Wyoming community services that we've had. And I agree with this group, that there should be more than one meeting face to face, so y'all can tell us what the decision was, or is going to be, and, you know, take it like a man.
Sir, the next meeting you have, you have to hand out your position. So maybe you had them out, you have to hand out of the union, you have to hand out your position.
And Mr. Flores and I were talking about that before it started, about really having these, like, at least frequently asked questions, right? And he started to go through them, and it just wasn't appropriate. And we'll do that from here on out, any of them that I'm a part of. All right, this please, raise your hand numerous times. Married to the retired postal office guy?
Yes. Um, a question for you, you know, the United States Postal Office, God bless them, they're in the United States Constitution.
That's right.
You know, they should be saying this, but... You know, we understand, you know, we're told by you guys that nothing is going to be decided, but we... I think, I believe these kids in the back, when they say, it's been decided. And I also read there that 15 employees will be asked to move. Am I right on that?
So that was the point of contention when I read through the slides, to say, is it 15 jobs? Is it 15 people? And I'm really not sure. Do you know the answer to that, sir?
Yeah, yeah, it's, and I know you're not going to, like, it's all being reviewed, right? You know, what happens, like, we're Brad here, right? What happens when, you know, you take on all the Casper packages? Is it really 15, or are we going to have to maybe add resources? You know, that's all being reviewed.
You could say that, but, you know, we should, you know, put machines out. So it's going to take a little bit of time to put the machines in, and in that time, you know, employees have to be moved. And then you're going to have to hire new employees. And so, you know, from what I understand, there's 15 people there.
And that's all, I said, that's all being reviewed. That's not the final number, it can be plus or minus. But again, you know, what happens when, you know, in the future, Casper does get all their packages, and they have to process packages, you know, we bring in a new machine. So, you know, that's not the final, it's being reviewed.
Okay, my question is then, because this is a constitutional issue, you know, Wyoming being one of 50 states, and we are supposed to be able to get the same as other states, what is our redress?
I'm sorry, what is...
What is our redress? How can we, you know, you stick your finger completely helpless, because we don't make these decisions, but these decisions are given to us. What is our redress as a citizen of the United States, living in a state that just lost the only processing centers in the whole United States, or the only state that won't happen? We're the ninth largest state, with some of the worst roads in the whole 50 states. What is our redress? If you don't like it?
No, I mean, just like we've been discussing with this QR codes, right? The comments coming here.
We get the comments?
Comments, putting all your feedback here, let your voice be heard.
Okay, what's the redress of that?
So I'll tell you...
Reach out to elected officials, like you said, your congressman, your mayor, your governor. Reach out to them, that they put pressure on these people.
Folks, real quick, we should go to the next city council meeting. All of us go there and say, you didn't represent us, you weren't there, I know your schedule's very important. We need to share with you, because you weren't there to hear our concerns about what we're going to have transitioned out of the state. And we need your support, and let us give you all of our points to that. We need to go to the next city council meeting and express that, because they aren't, they weren't here.
Well, I'll tell you, and this is just my experience in the postal service, and being an active member of my Lions community, I don't know where Tony is, he's in this in my town, but, not so much your local, but, you know, you have representatives from Lummis's office, you have Hagaman's office here, you have Barasso. They're probably the ones I want to reach out to.
Well, they're on board, they just are, we sure have a city official.
There's a legal redress.
Yeah, and I'm not aware. All right, thanks.
I'm not aware that we might be able to have a legal redress?
I don't know what your legal redress is, if there is.
Well, I think it's just part of the constitution, and we're not represented at all.
My name is Teresa Williams-Harmon. I am a disabled veteran. I am from Wyoming, and I served for Wyoming. Why are we not being represented by Wyoming on the board?
And one of my responsibilities is I want to kind of protect my postmaster, or my plant manager. Because, you know, it's kind of hard to stand up in front of people and receive some negative comments. And so, me in my position, I want to protect those people.
So is any of the board actually live in Wyoming?
They're here.
Where?
I'm not going to point her out. Your plant manager's here, we have postmasters here, and things like that.
So can they answer some of the questions also?
No. They don't know.
But the plant managers and the postmaster don't make these decisions. These decisions are down to these...
It's coming down to why we're not being represented, it's fully forgotten. And as a veteran, I have a big, big problem with that.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to talk to one of our representatives here first. All right, we had somebody from Hagaman's office?
No, back there, or me?
You.
Me?
Yes.
I'm nobody.
Everybody's...
There's somebody, there's somebody. Just not in their eyes, yeah.
I just have a question. All of your verbiage on your paperwork there says career employees. What is a career employee, and what about everybody that hasn't made it to a career employee?
They're affected. They can't fire career employees, because we have it in our contract. It's not something they're giving us, it's something they can't do.
What is it, though?
A career employee is guaranteed 40 hours a week.
But when do you get there?
So two years. For postal clerks, it takes two years, or if there's a vacancy before that.
So if you've been there less than two years, your job is up for grabs?
And I understand that, I've been accessed twice in a year.
They would lay us off, but we are protected by our contract. It's not something they may have.
We have free. Saying we have free, free.
There's three currently, we have two incoming.
There we go.
We have four incoming. Four incoming.
Because HR says only 50% of them will make it.
All right, and just for time, I ask that everybody go ahead and enter the conference for two minutes. This lady here, that's been standing in the middle here, Anna LC.
Good afternoon, and thanks for coming. My name is Hannah, I'm state president for the National Association of Letter Carriers here in Wyoming. I have been up to the hill and talking to our representatives, and that's really where you need to take this, is to our representatives. Barasso, Hagaman, and Lummis need to hear from us. I have been up on the hill when we were talking about five-day delivery, and they wanted to cut us completely. And the rhetoric then was, if we could go to five-day, we could save money. If we go to four-day, we'd save even more, and three-day, we'd be out of a job before we knew it. And now, when I go up on the hill, the story has changed. We're now delivering six-day in some places, seven days a week in packages, and Amazon on Sundays. Working our supplemental... Working our supplemental non-career carriers to depth. Um, delivering parcels for Amazon. Absolutely, we need Amazon. And yet I hear from the people up in, up above us in the office that if we could just get rid of Amazon, we could, we could staff accordingly because, you know, it's just killing us staffing for Amazon on Sundays. Um, this is what they're talking about is the packages, shipping the packages to Billings. Not the mail? Is that what?
No, the mail too.
The mail and everything's gonna go. What they're talking about when they talk about non-career is right now in the letter carrier craft, and I can't speak for the clerk craft because, um, I don't know their numbers and their contracts as well. But in the letter carrier craft, we have over fifty percent of the letter carriers that have been there less than five to six years. Some of them were non-career when we went under withholding for the flat sorting and the letter sorting machines. They worked seven, eight years as non-career carriers. We finally got them after we got the, got out of withholding. And, and let me tell you, when I talked to the postmaster the other day, I said, you know, well, how is this going to affect us? He says, oh, don't worry about that. This for the clerks and mail handlers. I gotta tell you, that's bullshit.
He's not even here.
Oh, that, I know him well. That's bullshit. Because it will put us under withholding again. Because what they're talking about is they're not going to eliminate career jobs. They're gonna do that through attrition. And they're going to ask them to either move to Billings or move to the carrier craft or move to Bu, uh, Bumfu, Egypt or whatever to keep a job. And then they're going to lay off all of the PSEs because they're non-career and they're not gonna have the two years time in. But then when they put us under withholding, it's going to affect the carriers too because our non-career is classified as a P, as a, a CCA. So we've got carriers that in two years, they can convert to career automatically if they haven't been able to convert before. Well, with us going under, if we end up moving this stuff, we'll go under withholding again. So nobody will convert to career as a, as a, a clerk, a mail handler or a carrier. And then, so we're gonna lose the, the help that knows what they're doing. They already push us for every second out there on the street. They've got GPS tracking us every minute. You know, you hear we get to take, we take some time and talk to our people. We do because we care. And it is the people that are paying our salaries. You know, because we don't operate from the sales of stamps and, or from tax, tax money like some people think. We operate from the sales of our stamps and services. And we have that service because of you, the people. And it's gonna take you, the people contacting our representatives and making them aware and fighting to keep people in Wyoming. Nobody wants to move up to Billings to sort mail. I sure as hell wouldn't want to go to Denver to sort mail. People in Rock Springs had to go to Salt Lake if they wanted the job or move to Casper or whatever. We are running our people out of the state for a job or we're raising unemployment.
Did the postal service ever bother to contact either union when they decided that they were gonna do this? First of all, we knew about PSEs and we knew what they were trying to do with PSEs. But this actually is the end result. Um, the modernization to, to save money and time, um, rather than service. Did they ever contact any of the unions to ask what your input is?
Right now, when I contacted up above my, my, uh, union officials above me asking what we were doing as far as getting involved and helping the APW and the mail handlers to fight this. I was told right now, our contract is up for negotiation and they're dealing with that. And we're doing rallies to, to, because of all of the, um, our job is getting more dangerous. We're getting people killed out there and robbed for arrow keys and stuff. That right now they're focusing on that, um, so.
Tommy is everything.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
They call it a trip.
Hey, everybody, my name is Sam Shumway. I'm the state director for AARP Wyoming. Uh, we are a membership organization of about eighty thousand Wyoming members. I know some of you here are members of AARP. Um, I live in Cheyenne, but I saw this issue posted in the newspaper or something and, and I realized that this is an important issue. This is a big deal for Wyoming. Cheyenne's experiencing some of the same things. And so I drove up, middle of the session, we got a lot of stuff we're doing in, in Cheyenne too, but this is a big deal. And, and it was, it's a little bit discouraging, but also a little bit heartening to hear public voices, to hear public input, to hear the postal workers stand up and fight for what they feel like is the right thing. I want to tell you, AARP, uh, Wyoming is the largest consumer advocacy organization in the state. And these are the issues that we fight for. Uh, whether it's the cost of, you know, public utilities going up, postal service needing, the cost of gas, the, the, these are issues that matter to us because they matter to you. And, um, so we're paying close attention to this. And one thing that I just can't wrap my brain around is the idea that our mail service in Casper or Cheyenne is gonna get more efficient or more timely or better by moving it to Billings or by moving it to Colorado. I, I'm trying to understand that. I, I'm sure there's some argument for that, but I would ask.
Drink more Kool-Aid.
I would ask that whatever decision is made, and I know the decision will be made in the coming weeks and months, that whatever decision is made is best for Casperites, is best for Wyoming, is best for the people in this community and in this state. And Cheyenne. Uh, and, and I'll just say, we're gonna be watching. AARP and our membership is gonna be watching, so thank you.
And if you ask if you guys can keep it to two minutes, because we, I want everybody to have a chance to speak. And I know we have a present that we're gonna close.
My name is Mark Proz. I'm just a resident and a postal service user. Sometimes very nice to use it, pretty satisfying with it all. Um, I have a few questions. Uh, kind of a general question. We met you and we met Alipay. Who are the other folks?
This is Bo Meyer. He's out of Albuquerque. And I'm not sure what your diagnosis is.
My name is Bo Meyer, division manager for operating.
This is Vicky Valenzuela.
I'm Vicky Valenzuela. I'm the division manager for implementation strategies for Western US. So I work with Alipay on the six day stations you have mentioned.
Yeah, I'm David Rupert. I'm a communications manager for, uh, the Western US, including Wyoming. And I live in Wyoming.
Great, thank you. Um, couple of, couple of technical questions, I guess. Uh, you had said that you put up numbers for projected transportation savings, which is kind of hard to understand if more stuff needs shipped back and forth. But then I think you said that those studies are not complete. So are those numbers, those projected savings just overall blanks at this point? Are they estimates and you're refining those in the study you're doing?
Correct, as we perceive.
Great, then my next question is, are those studies available for public review? Will they be, will these decisions are made?
Yeah, when the decision is made, it's made. I know, we share it with the members.
After the decision's been made. Um, in my career, I've done a lot of these kinds of savings analysis. So next question regarding those is who's doing that analysis? Is it outside consultants with input into the system? Is it management of the post office that's doing all of this? How is that being done? Is it being done like Obamacare was?
I, I. It's being done by the logistics portion of the, the organization, the logistics function of this organization.
Okay. Will that business case code get me any more detail? And I understand you couldn't provide a whole lot of detail in this stuff. You could only give a, by all due wisdom, well, that, scanning that, will that get me more detail?
So it gives me initial findings. So one of those is a survey.
Right.
The other gives you the initial findings.
Okay, so.
A lot of that information that we shared will be on there also.
Okay, so, and, and right now you're beyond the initial findings and you're refining this whole thing.
It's being reviewed.
Okay, um, well, I for one, you know, I was an elected official, um, back in New Jersey before I moved back home when I retired. Uh, and I appreciate, I know how tough it is to get up in front of what you, you have to expect is at least a skeptical crowd. So I appreciate the fact that you didn't just send a flunky down here, but you can't do so. And at that point, I think I'm gonna maybe pile on just a little bit too, um.
Okay, you're on time.
Do you use the phrase delivering for America? I would, and that sounds great. I worked for years for Boeing and all of these projects that came up all had really cutesy little names. We wanted seven thirty sevens that crashed, seven eighty sevens that almost burned up on the runway, a Starliner that still has yet to carry astronauts to space at billions and billions of dollars. And now that's just, that creates society. Maybe instead of delivering for America, you could talk about delivering for the people who need to use your service. You know, you're kind of losing the individual impact of things. And, you know, a lot of those phrases, please always keep in mind, you're talking about people's lives. Right, case your state checks, what is this?
Okay, we got about fifteen more minutes and I want to get everybody in.
Okay, a real quick question, is there another way other than these QR codes?
So if we're, we're copying down all your comments, then we go ahead and we've all, we're also doing an audio recording where I want everybody to come and use the mic. And then they transcribe those, all the comments that are made. And then they put that in as part of the study also.
I'm just trying to know how not to use the QR code.
Is there like a website?
Oh, I'll get you a website. If anybody needs a website, I'll provide that for them on the, or comments I want to get to everybody. Let me get this guy here, he's really, he's great. And if you want, as a matter of fact, if you do want to leave a comment, you can kind of move towards the middle and I can kind of judge how many people we have.
Hey, everybody. My name's Adam Henry. I'm a lifelong Casper wife and resident. Both my parents, I was raised on the post office. Both my parents worked thirty plus years here, retired happily. Um, first of all, I want to ask, first off, we danced around, this guy's not even here, man. We'll get to that, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. Where are we going? This guy asked you about this whole career layoffs thing and what that meant. And if we're gonna relocate, we just kept telling him we're gonna get to that. That man left because we just beat around the bush. And I want to know, where are we going? Can you drive, get on twenty twenty six, head west? You drive a hundred miles before you find a gas station. What do y'all know about that? We're the sixth lar, ninth largest state in the nation and we have these populations. Don't you think that that deserves a little bit of, uh, consideration from regional variables that we might have, that you might not have? Look, east of the Mississippi. We're not considering that. Then you're here for this public comment. Everybody in this room stood up in support of postponing this for a better time and we just ignored it. So are you listening to us? Are you here for us? Or are you just here to go push your little agenda and use your fancy words to try to talk over everybody's heads? You talked about saving three million dollars. I think you could save a hundred times that. I know you could save at least ten times that, your guy Jason, who came up the other day, which, you know, the credibility of him has now come into question because you guys contradict each other lately. But he said that you spent thirty million dollars violating the collective bargaining agreement. Last year, just in Denver. Nationwide, it's probably more, it's probably three hundred billion nationwide. And you want to save three million by change of operations in Casper? Why don't we just do what we're supposed to do? Do it the right way, do what we agreed to do because it saves three hundred million dollars that way? Also, you think we're gonna improve service? We all order stuff online, right? Everybody here orders stuff from Amazon. You order stuff, you have it come across the country. You have something that dropped off and say Lexington, Kentucky, and it comes and it's going. It says it's gonna be delivered on time until what? Till it gets to where? Denver? Denver. Till it gets to Billy, till it gets to Chicago, like big mega facilities where everything gets stopped. And you send mail out of Casper? I have people here that, I remember the, the man Jude, he owned Sonic Rainbow. He saw me, I was shopping in his store and he was amazed that even during the peak of Christmas, we get records to his customers in North Carolina in two or three days. That's not gonna happen if we drive it to Billings. That's ridiculous. There's no way that spending an extra eight hours on the road, you get mailed back and forth is gonna somehow save us money. There's a lot of other ways that we could look at it, saving money too. We talked about the whole Amazon thing. We got fleas, man. All these other businesses, all these other companies, the demand for the service that we provide created the richest man this planet has ever seen. And we're losing money somehow? It's real. Pathetic. I just want to take a second too, I forgot. I want to thank all of you, my coworkers and the members of my community that I serve. Thank you for coming out.
If you want to comment, I want you to line up to the middle so I can get to people.
I don't like it. Um, my son who delivers to a senior apartment, these people live on eight hundred dollars a month. I'm sure you guys make way more than that. It's kind of cocky up here. And they wait at the mailbox, they have lots of mailboxes. They wait for their measly social security check to come. And if that's late, you're gonna have muh on your hands and it's discrimination against people that's on social security.
And, and I appreciate that comment and I've, I've heard those things before too. Realize that security checks are not mailed from Casper and then delivered to Casper. They come from outside Wyoming.
I don't care how they're delivered. They're late for.
It's not gonna slow down the delivery.
Whether or whatever, these people eat, eat and get their medicine.
Let's, let's hit comments. I want this lady to come forward. Thank you.
I just, I'll talk into the mic. Please, please. I just really haven't quite. So I'm Shaylan, uh, Bobach. I'm just to set us in. I live here in Casper. I grew up in Glanrod, which the postal system there is amazing. And I think that's all we really have. Uh, sometimes, I think even FedEx takes the packages to the post office. So, um, so the gentleman that left that didn't get his questions, he did say something that I was questioning, like the whole reason I'm here, is how is it cost effective to, you've got gas prices going up, you've got to pay your employees wages, so all the way to Billings, you're paying somebody to take it down there. And then your gas prices, they're, they're not stable. They're up, they're down, and I just don't see how two ways it is.
What about vehicle problems?
Yeah, there's that too. I mean, it's all stuff that you need to put into the cost. Uh, like, it's costing us to do that. So why can't we just keep it here in Casper and keep it local and keep the jobs here? Because, I mean, I don't want to see my locals having to leave the state. I don't want, I don't want these guys to lose their jobs. I don't want them to have to move to Rock, well, uh, Camp Leupold Springs, because they're here. Um, but I don't want them to have to move anywhere. These are white people. I mean, and I think each and everyone will do that.
Can we answer the question that's been asked? I mean, I know we're running out of time, but where are we going? What layoffs, relocation, like what's the deal? Let's, we got ten minutes, man. You almost stalled out of that.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that. That's part of the review process?
Well, so Alipay said we get to that, what is, what's his answer?
Yeah.
He doesn't know the answer either.
Well, then why did he say we'll get to that? He said we'd get to that. Now he tells me you don't have to answer.
Right.
Well, that's what it's gonna do. They're gonna have to say you accessed the billings.
With his signature on it.
Okay, yeah.
You mentioned that most of the people that are really affected are people that have been issued by the order. Are you talking, you know, we already discussed the fact that if they're PSEs, they'll just get a ladder, um, gotten out. So if these people are actually mine, have to get the heck out, they're gonna be career employees?
So the question is, are the, uh, trans, the pre-career employees like the PSEs, it's pre-career, what's gonna happen to them?
Well, no, I already, I already figured that, you know, I don't, I don't. Well, no, I already figured that, you know, I don't believe them part of, you know, if you put up your information up here. I don't think they're part of the fifteen people, the PSEs, right?
No. Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't wanna get into the news, you know, we have collective bargaining agreements and we know that. We have, they're going to be respected, and after this meeting, you know, I've got, you know, our subject matter expert on, and I'm sure our union stewards and our presidents that are here for both unions will be answering, you know, all the details regarding accessing, if we even get to that, right? You know, we could take probably eight hours talking about what happens, you know, in accessing, you know, and, you know, that's, you know, our community members that are here, rest assured that the collective bargaining agreements that we have will be respected. Yeah, and then the other thing too, in terms of, you know, Adam, I think it was Adam.
That's correct.
When he, you know, stated about, you've got a place in Billings who has their own air and service network. When you look at Casper to Casper, you know, anything that, like tonight, anything that originates out of the eight two four, eight two eight area, you know, anywhere from like five to eight percent of the volume actually is stays within the geographical air and service standard, which is a two-day standard. The rest of it is going and out of the state of Wyoming, as we speak right now, so, you know.
Exactly, that's what you're saying now is that it's not even gonna show up here. So our volume is gonna go down from what it is here, the five days, right?
No, I'm just saying, you know, when you look at the total amount of volume on the origin side that gets, that gets sent to the Casper plant from an origin perspective, anything that's going out of the state, out of that volume, only eight, maybe eight percent of it stays within local. The rest of it, the rest of it goes out of the state of Wyoming.
That's gonna be a low population also.
It's not just here, it's not just here, it's everywhere else, you know, mostly you turn around volume, whether it's a metro, most of it is a small, it's a small percentage.
Well, some sort of, so the volume of mail that gets processed right now that goes out of the state will not come in Casper anymore. Now only half, eighty percent.
Yeah, it will come in, right, it'll come in, it'll get consolidated, right? It'll get consolidated, full containers, goes to Billings to get processed. And then the Casper mail comes back, which is a two-day product, gets sent back on day one to make sure we get it to the day two delivery. And we are hurt by time, did you have something you wanted to say?
I wanna support Deb, we all stood up and said, and we all believed that this is a sham, a lot of us believe that this is a sham. This shouldn't be happening right now, and we should reschedule this. We should reschedule this entire thing so that the general public can be here, not at a shady time in the middle of a Wednesday.
So that's a good comment, put it in the survey, we'll share it with.
Put it in the survey?
Yeah. And you share that, you share that information also with your congressional representatives? And we're running out of time, so let's. I, from what I'm told, it has not been made, it is still.
But a representative view.
It was what he said, yeah.
You know what?
My name is Connor Price, I'm a veteran and also six years in the United States Postal Service. During the study management, did not supply overtime during our peak, we could not get the mail back, we sent it to them. We complained to them, overtime, we need staffing, we need all this stuff, and nothing happened. They were too concerned with social matters on the forefront floor between a manager and employee, figuring that out, then the mail. Also, just to point out, like everything else, they are failing, they are failing in Texas, they've already lost a billion dollars this quarter. The OIG is investigating DeJoy because of his stop in the trucking company. So it's like I said, do not believe what they're telling you, they lied to us on the data. We have constantly finding management, paroxysm, breaking the rules, every grievance is a contract failure, they spent thirty million dollars on that. Don't trust me, it's.
I wanna finish, I wanna finish with Bob Hoover here, so if you wanna get a comment in.
I just wanna thank my fellow union, all the different unions, you say you're a communication person. The first announcement went out February sixth, we didn't hear about it until February fourteenth, we are the version of it, but not the one put out by the postal service, until February fourteenth, when Jason was with us. Number one says seeing the announcement from the postal service in the news, and there's a lot of those canvases. The flyers, the social media and everything else came from all three of our unions here, getting the public out here. I would like to thank them, because postal service didn't follow through.
Anybody else with comments, can we finish up?
My name's Anna, I'm Casper born and bred, I am a PSE, non-career employee, so I am one of the people who would lose my job with this change. And I just wanted to thank the community for coming out. I knew all of our union stewards and our coworkers were gonna be here, we talked about it, since we heard about it on the fourteenth. But I know it's probably short notice for our community, it's at a horrible time for our community, so I wanted to thank you all for being here and fighting for us.
Hi, how are y'all doing? My name's Bob Janiski, I am the Wyoming State Rep for Local, three twenty-one, Meloners Union. I wanna thank everyone for showing up here, I mean, this is fantastic. I believe there's more people than the public we need that we had in Cheyenne, okay? What I did in Cheyenne was pretty much just tried to explain a lot of the propaganda that they had been putting out. But it seems like nothing is getting past all of you, you are on to it, you understand exactly what this is going to mean in the legs for Casper mail. But just a few things that I would like to bring up that have been glossed over. We discussed all classes of mail is going to be affected because they're going to be taking the originated mail out of the Casper facility. The handout that I gave to twenty-five of you, it should break down, explain, I wish I had more, I didn't realize this was gonna be the kind of turnout that we had. But, okay, all classes of mail is gonna be affected, that includes medical test kits, I mean, real time sensitive things, bills, okay? But mail-in ballots, regardless of your feelings about this, is being glossed over, okay? And that has been one of the sticking points as far as the post office trying to shut things down. They have not figured out a way to ensure that the mail-in ballots will not leave the state, okay? I can guarantee you right now, because it's already been mentioned, Salt Lake City, the western portion of Wyoming, that mail is being processed in Salt Lake City. Prior elections that we've had, the, there's, there is a protocol when it comes to the mail-in ballots. The carriers collect it and will segregate it and separate it up, collection mails, as we see it, we'll grab it and segregate it, segregate it, excuse me. And we have a machine, DBCS, that has been brought up, that is like our safety net, okay? Anything that we miss in the thousands of pieces of mail that we get will be caught by that machine, okay? That is the same, that is what ensures the mailing, excuse me, mailing election ballots to the residents from leaving the state. Now, most recently, like I said, it's, election ballots are processed, excuse me, the mails processed in Salt Lake City. Previously, the ballots would be segregated, set in Rock Springs, and we have a run back and forth from Cheyenne to Salt Lake, okay? And on the return run to Cheyenne, they would pick up the election ballots, take it to Cheyenne to go to whatever district to, you know, be processed. The thing is, as of six months ago, they eliminated the Salt Lake City run from Cheyenne. So therefore, the only way to get these ballots back, unless they do special runs for each and every election, it's gonna go western side to Salt Lake, to Denver, to Cheyenne, that is how it has to happen. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and I think you guys have figured it out, this is not limited to Wyoming, this is going on everywhere, okay? And you already know that your mail is going to be delayed, asking for an hour trip to Billings, four hours trip back is going to add time. It may be within their acceptable standards, but we'll see about that. What happens if it goes, because they said in here, mail packages destined for outside the Casper area may receive better service, okay? What if it is going from Casper, a rural city, to another rural city in another state? Where they're going through the same things that we are, any additional times that we have, they'll have additional times there. One thing that has not been talked about at all, other than the fact they talk about AOs, okay? The areas that Casper services and the runs where they go to collect the mail. What they have not talked about is a thing called optimized collections, or local transportation optimization. Fancy words, but what it is being described as is a milk run. For those of us that are a certain age, we remember when we had milkmen deliver our milk, okay? They show up one time a day, in the morning, drop off your milk, take up your empties, and then leave until the next day. That is what they're proposing for the collection mail, for all these little tiny AOs. One time a day, the trucks will go out, drop off the mail to be for delivery that day, so it'll be sometime early in the morning. Then grab whatever collection mail from the day before to do a circle around to Casper, to go to Billings, to come back for processing. So I wanted to bring that up, and on the handouts that I, which ones got? I have a thing on the bottom, links, and it's saved at postoffice.com. If you check that out, there's tons of information that is really relevant to the situation. But the other ones I have down are actually post office sites that gives you these information, this information for the mail processing facility review. It shows each step of the process that we're in, and you'll see all the different facilities that this is going through. They talk about us like we are unique, okay? If you go and do a deep dive and read the letters that they were issued, it's the same thing that you guys got right now, we're just the different cities. But they're, what they're putting down as far as modernization, it's all the same thing for all these facilities. How can it be the same? If these are independent studies, how can it be the same? Let me see. That's really all I have to say.
Bob, you wanna finish with this unacceptable for us to lose our processes in distribution centers, period.
Now that you bring that up, P and D C, okay? Casper P and D C, Cheyenne P and D C, there used to be a P and D C in Rock Springs, okay? Now, this is gonna be modernized to an LPC, a local processing center. What they're not telling you, it is a downgrade. And when you downgrade something, you are downsizing. And so all this stuff that they're wanting to do and give out, you know, for delivery, it's gonna be with a lesser workforce guarantee, you know, thank you.
I also wanna know, our military, or anybody in the military, all those mail-in boats are gonna be heavily impacted.
Absolutely, until they can basically explain, oh, this is how we're gonna handle it. I don't have anything, because quite honestly, if you look, once again, included with the websites, if you look, I gotta break down. January first, twenty twenty-three, first-class mail, which is our, you know, this is what we do, deliver letters, was at ninety-one point two percent. Now, a year later, January first through January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, has dropped to eighty-four percent, this is on time. Okay, this is, they're striving to hit ninety-five percent on time, right now, first-class mail is eighty-four percent. This is after the extra day that the postmaster has added to delivery services, okay? It's been dropping consistently, even with the additional time. So the whole forty billion, it's not working. Part of the problem is Wyoming is different, okay? They're trying to use a one-size-fits-all mentality around the nation. We don't fit into that because we're nine percent rural, each state has a rural population, okay? And each rural population is being treated the same way. I don't know if you guys know this, I thought it was kind of funny, they asked, as far as for the review, they want people to identify themselves. If this is a survey to, to, I guess, increase the efficiency of Casper and the mail, why do they need to know which media, which news outlets showed up? Why do you need to know congressional, you know, personnel? Why do you need to know about that if this is a specific study on the improvement of the mail? Any answer?
All right, so first off, I wanna give our American Sign Language guy a hand, he must be. This concludes our meeting, our public meeting, if you have questions about the website, where you can go ahead and put in the comments. I'll be here for about another hour to go ahead and, or if you wanted to talk to anybody in the postal service up here, we're available. Thank you, this concludes our meeting.